Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wachem County Council meeting for June 28, 2016. Would you please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Ken Mann.
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Carl Weimer.
Here.
Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of quick announcements. If you have your cell phone with you tonight, please put it on vibrate or off. And if you'll be handing out any paperwork for any of our hearings, please make sure that the staff gets a copy for their records. We have two sets of minutes to look at this evening. First is Committee of the Whole for May 31, 2016. The other one for regular county council for May 31, 2016. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I move approval.
Second? Then move in second. And any discussion or additions, deletions? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We now have a special moment for our county executive to have a few moments for citizen recognition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure tonight to read a letter of commendation for Gary Lisney. Gary, his wife Christie, and many, many of his friends throughout the community, many of them involved with Gary and the veterans community here also to honor Gary tonight. But before I read the letter of commendation, I'd like to ask Liz Harmon-Craig, our Community Health Specialist, Veterans Programs of the Wachem County Health Department, to come up and to say a few words. Then I'd like to read the commendation and then have Gary to come up with me as I do that, and then he may have a couple of comments after that. Liz?
It feels odd to face you guys instead of Gary while I say this. Again, I'm Liz Harmon-Craig. I'm the Wachem County Veteran Specialist. Can I spin it around? All right. It feels better. Again, I'm Liz Harmon-Craig, the Wachem County Veteran Specialist. And really, the reason I'm the Wachem County Veteran Specialist is Gary Lisney. Prior to 2011, Wachem County did not have a formalized veterans program. It was run where basically one check at a time to help folks, and Gary realized that wasn't efficient and that Wachem County needed to do more. He pushed county council and the former executive to form a program, which basically created the Wachem County Veterans Assistance Program, which took from giving one check at a time to creating a robust, multifaceted program that has won national love awards for helping end homeless housing here in Wachem County. We've expanded transportation to VA. We've enrolled thousands of veterans in VA healthcare. I mean, the amount that the program has grown under Gary's tutelage is just an amazing. And I'm thankful to be able to thank Gary, because when I think of the Veterans Assistance Program and it getting started, I think of Gary Lisney. Why? He was on my hiring board. He was the first chair member I ever met. He was the director of the chair when I got hired. So I was brand-new, fresh out of the Army, had gone to Western for a bit and started here. And really, Gary was the one that I called for the lay of the land of, you know, what was the board expecting me to do in my role. Moreover, as I went out into the community and met more veterans, Gary Lisney was everywhere. He's at the American Legion. He's with VVA. Every board meeting, he's there. He's involved. I think of him. He brought the faces of Agent Orange here to Wachem County, which, if you have any partners, a moving event where it's veterans and family members get together and testify for Congress on what Agent Orange has, how it has affected their lives. And it was unbelievably moving. I mean, the event packed the St. Luke's Health Education Center. I have never seen that place standing room only. There had to be 400-plus vets there to testify. And again, Gary Lisney was essential in bringing that here to Wachem County. So I think, again, you really can't have the Veterans Assistance Program or just the benefits here in Wachem County without thinking of Gary Lisney. He and several other, again, veterans were key in bringing those benefits here to this community. Moreover, we're in the process of ensuring that we'll always have space for veterans to come in and access those benefits. So we're remodeling currently over in our program, and we're setting up new office spaces, particularly one office space that we'd like to name for Gary, again, just in thanks for all that he's done for the veterans here in Wachem County at the national level. So on behalf of the county and veterans in this community and myself, Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Liz. Gary, would you be willing to come forward? And Christie, if you'd like to join him, that would be great, or you'd find over there. All right. Gary, come on forward. And Christie. It takes a team. And I want you to know is that Gary and Christie have an army of support out in the audience here tonight. But Gary, I'd like to read this letter of commendation on behalf of Wachem County. I'd like to acknowledge the substantial contributions you have made to the Wachem County veterans. You have been a key member of several local chartered veterans organizations, and we're particularly grateful for the more than seven years you have served on our Veterans Advisory Board. Your participation on our advisory board was instrumental in the creation of our county's Veterans Assistance Program. As a result, our program has expanded services to many more deserving veterans, including housing the homeless, providing critical transportation, healthcare, and temporary financial assistance. Our program has also been able to provide onsite access to veteran services officers, better known as VSOs, who are helping veterans secure the federal benefits they have earned while serving our nation. In addition to your contribution on our board, you have also dedicated significant time and energy to educating veterans about the detrimental effects of Agent Orange and championed ongoing efforts to ensure veterans can gain access to their benefits. Plans are in progress to create a dedicated office space within our veterans program for veteran services officers working with the American Legion, Vietnam Veterans of America, and the disabled American veterans. This office will provide a professional, comfortable, secure, and safe place for veterans to meet with the VSO to identify and claim their earned benefits. It would be my honor to dedicate this VSO office with the encouragement and support of your many, many, many fans that we have here tonight and many more, to you in recognition of your steadfast efforts. This will ensure that we continue your work connecting veterans to support benefits and in turn carry on the privilege of honoring them. Please accept my heartfelt congratulations and sincerest appreciation for all that you have accomplished. Job well done, Gary.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to just mention a few things if I could. One, there's certainly a lot more people here that knew about this than me today. And I heard about it and put some notes together. I happened to be in Seattle the day, all day, at the Treatment Center. And so I called my daughter, or my wife called my daughter and wrote her some notes, and she typed these out for me. So I'd like to thank the county council and Jack for this recognition and for the people here and veterans here in Wachem County. Providing support for our services to veterans is very important to me, as it is to most of us here tonight. As a veteran myself, I'm proud to say that we've built a successful model for veteran services here in Wachem County with the Wachem Veterans Advisory Board, and I'm honored to be a part of it. The success of the Wachem County Veterans Advisory Board is really the result, not of me, but of a coordinated effort of many agencies and volunteer groups. There are 39 counties in the state of Washington. I currently serve on the Governor's Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee, and I can tell you that Wachem County Veterans Advisory Board and the things that they do are routinely recognized as the leader in the state by not only the Veterans Advisory Board, but the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs. They would like for Wachem County to be used as a model, and Ann Deacon and Liz Harmon-Craig have helped other counties. Of 39 counties, not all counties in Washington State have veterans advisory boards, although it's a mandate, it is in the RCW. But we are very fortunate here to have the support that we have. And recently, it just come about, as Liz said, in around 2010, we lobbied the Health Department, Regina Delahunt. We were one of only two boards in the county that weren't under some type of organization in the county. And Regina agreed, after a lot of lobbying, to take on the additional work of supporting the Veterans Advisory Board. And she assigned human service manager, Ann Deacon. So a lot of things have been done, and one of the first things we did was hire a veteran specialist, Liz Harmon-Craig. And I learned many years ago, alls you have to do is surround yourself with good people and get out of the way and turn loose, and it is unbelievable what they've done. The other thing I'd like for the council to know here tonight is that in being, sitting on these other boards, the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs on occasion puts on seminars and programs for all of the counties. And without fail, I would go to those, and I'd be absolutely dumbfounded, the response from Wachem County. Not just Wachem County, but the non-government organizations, Opportunity County, Catholic Home Services. We were lucky, the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs, lucky to get 50% show. I don't think we ever got 50%. But I can tell you, there was a very large contingency from Wachem County that wanted to help. And through Ann's guidance and Liz's guidance and Regina's, we have a very prolific program for veterans, and they have developed a one-stop shop over in the Health Department, that if somebody comes in, they see to it, they get help. They may not be able to get help through the Veterans Advisory Board or the Assistance Board, but they know where to turn to our fellow veterans and whether it be the American Legion or the DAV. If the fund can't support it, they have built a rapport with those groups, and I'm tickle pink over that. Let's see. I don't want to, there's a bunch of these I've forgotten, I'm sure, but Catholic Community Services, we have Wachem Volunteer Services, we have people picking up veterans, taking them to doctor's appointments, taking them if they need to go grocery shopping or to pharmacy. It has really expanded and grown here. We're all very proud of that. And it was a very big group effort of all the veterans organizations. So our veterans returning home in the future are going to need ongoing help. They're having multiple deployments. The people in my area, we went one time, we went back a second or third time, it was because we volunteered. But we know these veterans in Iraq and Afghanistan, they are, the number of deployments, the problems with PTSD, the problems with toxins that they're having. We have a couple of bills that Liz mentioned, Agent Orange. It is, it was, that's incorporated in it, but those are toxin bills, and they're not just for Vietnam vets. They're for all era and all services and all military organizations. So it covers Iraq, Afghanistan, all of the other issues. And Senate Bill 2901 and House Bill 1769. Seventeen sixty-nine? Seventeen sixty-nine? Okay, 1769, if you would look those up and see and do anything. Jack, I know the national executives of the country are backing and supporting that legislation. So if you have, we still don't have some of our legislators and senators that have signed on. So if you have any influence there, I appreciate if you'd make a call and ask them to support those bills. Thank you very much.
Hey, Gary. Thank you so much for your service as a veteran and all your tireless work as veterans. We'd love to shake your hand if you could come up and run the gauntlet.
Sure. How do you do? Sir? Tom. Yeah.
Congratulations, Gary.
And just in closing, I'd like to say is, Gary, I know that you're challenged with some health issues right now. My thoughts and prayers are with you, as I'm sure as everybody's in the room is, and we wish you the best. Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to make this letter of commendation work tonight. Appreciate your support of it also.
It was absolutely the council's pleasure. Okay, we'll move into our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. Audience members who have...
Can we...
We'll let him exit first. That's good.
Can I make one comment about Gary, just quickly?
While they're moving out, I just wanted everybody to know, Gary does so much for the veterans in so many ways. Gary also came to our meetings all the time and spoke his mind on so many issues. I mean, he's been just an incredible activist for county issues, which I don't know if everybody realizes that, because it's been a while since he's been active with us.
Okay, so audience members who signed up at the back of the room prior to the beginning of our meeting will be called first, will be asked to form a line. Each speaker should state your name, and you'll be given three minutes to address the council. Our first public hearing is on Wachem County Comprehensive Plan, the appendices. And we have one person signed up. We will open the public hearing, and it's Joy Gilthill.
I'm Joy Gilthill, and I'm here to speak my own personal opinion on Appendix X, F, Appendix F, the six-year comprehensive plan having to do with the adult corrections existing jail facilities. While I understand the need to address fixing an illegal jail in the comprehensive plan, I am still standing vehemently against the idea that we need to put in the comprehensive plan as a de facto statement that the bureaucracy has the right to build a 521-bed facility on La Bountie Road costing $122 million and a $19 million sheriff's facility, when the taxpayers said no to that very facility. Technically, yes, they voted down a sales tax, but the voters also voted down a facility in Ferndale. They voted down the La Bountie Road property. They have asked repeatedly for years for alternatives to the jail industry move to build a regional jail complex out in the county on that property. They've said no in the EIS reports. No one, no one in the county, from the council to the jail industry consultants, have addressed the hundreds of concerns that were brought up in the FEIS documents. No one has solved the emergency conditions that are currently existing in the jail. What I would love to ask, what I would plead with the council to please add to the comprehensive plan, is the word, something along the lines of, "The current jail is illegal and needs to be repaired immediately so it is humane and safe." It is in violation of Wachem County Code 128-100, among other things. This comprehensive plan facility section to build another new jail is subject to a true and valid needs assessment. That includes considering a declining jail population, a review of pre-arrest alternatives being implemented, and a full review of alternative and less expensive locations. This assessment must be done by non-bias sources who have no conflict of interest, and it should be fully vetted by the public, since the public pays the bill. The public has said no repeatedly. No one seems to be listening, and I believe it is really, truly a sleight of hand trick to put a de facto approval of that jail.
Thirty seconds, please.
Your policymaking body has not even approved that jail. You haven't approved the site, even though you bought the land. In your testimony to buy the land, you said, "We don't have to use it for the jail." The records will show that there is no public, full public hearing on that property that says, "We want to build the jail out there." The evidence will show the opposite. I will be speaking in an open public session and delivering more information. We've said no to more mass incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you. Please do not applaud. We want to be fair and impartial to everyone who speaks tonight, so please hold that. Anyone else want to speak to appendices of the Wachem County Comprehensive Plan?
Wendy Harris. There's a few things in here that really don't make sense to me. I understand why we have appendices for glossaries and acronyms, but I don't know why we need a separate appendix for C, our countywide planning policies. And what concerns me there is the removal of community value statements based on the fact they're from 1994. And what I say to that is, you know, shame on the county for not updating community values. When I got here about 10 years ago, there was a vision program that was being developed. I don't know what happened to that, but I would urge you to look into that. Until you come up with something different, I'd like you to leave that community vision in there. The reasons given by staff is that we now have these different committees and commissions, and I don't think that's a replacement for community vision. Those committees are, the people who are on them tend to be stakeholders who have specific interests. They don't necessarily, I know they don't represent the views of just the public at large. There's a lot of things that get short-shifted in these kind of committees, especially how much the public values wildlife. That's not reflected in our policies. So I'm asking you keep that in there. That's really important. The bibliography, that kind of gave me heartburn. What that bibliography should be is something that's akin to best available science, which means it's something that's been reviewed and confirmed by the scientific community and something that's reasonably updated. You have things in there from the '80s, from the early '90s. Some of them are partisan reports. One of them, I believe, was paid for by a former council member for sort of a partisan perspective. So I think that anything that's in that bibliography really needs to reflect the same standards of best available science that are required for the critical area ordinance. In the capital facilities, I'm a little upset about how many trails we have in there. We're supposed to be avoiding critical areas when we're building capital facilities, including trails. The trails that I'm seeing are being put in the riparian zone, which is the last place to put them, and even the USDA agrees with that. And we don't have an assessment of where our species and habitat are. So basically, a major component of our critical areas is missing. So I don't know how we can even do a capital facilities plan and avoid, to the extent we can, critical areas if we don't know where all of them are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to Wachem County Comprehensive Plan appendices? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. The next public hearing is on Wachem County Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Regarding Amendments to Wachem County Code Title 20 (Zoning), Title 21 (Land Division Regulations), Title 22 (Guide Meridian Improvement Plan), the Official Zoning Map and Related Changes to the Comprehensive Plan and Its Subsets, the Guide Meridian Improvement Plan, the Point Roberts Character Plan, and the Point Roberts Subarea Plan. So do we have any staff report at all?
Good evening, council. Mark Personius with Planning and Development Services. These series of amendments are a package that go along with the comp plan, so you'll be adopting these as a part when you adopt the comprehensive plan. They are implementing regulations, so where there were changes that were made in the policies in the comp plan that required consistency with the development regulations, these development regulation amendments are keeping up with that, so that when you adopt, you adopt a consistent package. So it does run a gamut of things, but those are the ones that the staff has scoured through and found that we needed to maintain consistency. That's what these things do, so.
So, Mark, you're not looking for any vote tonight?
No action tonight.
Okay.
We will actually discuss, these will be on council agenda, I think, in your July 12 Committee of the Whole meeting to go over as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Personius.
Yes, sir.
Given our discussion earlier today about the comprehensive plan, I'm just wondering if July 12 is a good idea?
Well, we'll look at that with your staff to make sure that we schedule things out accordingly, but I think some comments have already come in from some comments.
Does it need to be done concurrent with the comp plan?
I'm sorry?
Does it need to be done concurrently with the comp plan?
These do, because they are, because of the specific changes that were made. Yeah. There are other things that could come later, but...
Then I withdraw my comment.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing, and the first speaker will be Deana Jensen.
I'm going to wait till open session. I realize I'm not on target topic for this particular section, so I'll wait.
What'd she say?
She's named for open session.
Oh, okay. Okay.
She thought she was sunning up for...
Oh.
Sandy Robson, same?
Does it say unless it includes chapter two?
No.
Okay.
Wanda Nevels?
Unfortunately, I have to say I didn't know anything about this hearing until the last minute, so I don't know, I don't know very much about what's going on, except I've been hearing about this big, huge jail that's to be built, and I don't understand why. I have a lot of questions about it, and it seems like anytime something comes up, I only hear about it like the same day, and I kind of, I just, I would like to mostly second everything that Joy Gillofin said.
This hearing is not on the jail.
Okay, so...
You're welcome to speak in open session, which will be right after this.
Okay. That's what I meant by, "I don't understand."
Yeah, no.
I don't know the process.
This is on specific items put forward by planning for the, for various zoning and land use.
Okay.
But there'll be an opportunity, probably just in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still figuring it out.
So that's the end of the list. Is there anybody that would like to speak to us on Wachem County Planning and Development Regulations? Seeing, okay, I see one.
I'd like to address the changes that are being made to zoning to reflect the changes in UGAs. In particular, I'm concerned about the UGA that we have in Columbia Valley. There are air quality problems there. And, you know, I don't understand how that's, in our critical area ordinance, under geological... in our critical area ordinance, under geological hazards, if you cannot build and mitigate what you're building to make it safe, you're not supposed to build. And I don't see how that should be any different for air quality, which is something that's also covered by the GMA. There are, that area has not been in air attainment, and the only approach that I see being taken is to either give them better wood or updated stoves, and that's like saying to someone that has secondhand smoke, "Oh, well, I'm going to cut back from three packs to two packs." It's not resolving the problem, and it's an inappropriate place to start planning industrial growth or more urban-level residential growth, because we already have existing health issues and significant issues. And I really think that needs to be taken, I think that needs to be taken out of the UGA and put in reserve until we can get a handle on the air quality problems there. And that issue has existed for a long time, and it's not getting better. And the Clean Air, maybe this would put pressure on the Clean Air Agency to do something a little more effective. They are not enforcing any codes that would protect public health. They're only looking to see if laws are being violated, and that concerns me. I'm also concerned about the U Street Reserve. That doesn't belong even in a reserve. That is the most inappropriate place for more development. We've got to protect Lake Patton, and that is the only major corridor left in the city that runs between U Street and on the other side, Samish Road. And if you look, that's like the only really big patch of green that you see left in the city. And it's so important that we protect that habitat, that we protect the lake quality, and also, it's going to be very expensive to build there, and it's a geo-hazard.
Thirty seconds, please.
So it's all kinds of critical area problems, so I don't think it's a good policy. And then, Linden, we don't have water. We shouldn't be building in places that don't have, on paper, documented water rights to expand. It's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we will move, thank you all for your testimony. We really appreciate it. We'll move on to the open session. During the open session, audience members will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue that's relevant to county business. Just please state your name and topic of interest for the record, and if your name is complicated, please spell it for the clerk. We will now open the open session.
Sandy Robson, Birch Bay. I'd like to voice my objection to the proposed ordinance AB 2016-191, amending County Code 3.08 Purchasing System. I ask that the council reject this proposal. In the subject line of County Executive Loews memorandum contained in Exhibit A, attached to the ordinance, it only states Watkins County Code 3.08-100. It concerns me that while there are certainly amendments proposed in 3.08-100, shown in the documents contained in Exhibit A, there are also amendments proposed in Section 3.08-090. However, those proposed amendments in 3.08-090 are not noted anywhere in the memorandum. So while the council has a more discerning eye, and it's likely to come across those amendments, in reviewing the changes to 3.08, the public may not have realized those proposed changes, because 3.08-090 was not referenced anywhere in the memo. The memo alerts readers to the comparison table included in Exhibit A, showing brief comparison of Watkins County to King, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. That comparison table does not provide important information with which to make a real comparison, such as population figures for all those four counties, which can make a big difference. According to U.S. Census Bureau Quick Facts, it estimates the population in King County, 2,117,125; Pierce, 843,0954; Snohomish, 772,0501; and Little Ol Watkins, 212,284. Because those three comparison counties, population numbers are so much larger than Watkins' population, the budget spending and thresholds for those particular counties will likely be much greater than Watkins'. Also, comparison table does not reference amendments proposed to Section 3.08-090, in which there's at least one significant change beyond the 250,000 threshold number, referenced in both Section 3.08-090 and 3.08-100. That would be the change to add the language quote, "not to exceed 250,000," or "15% of contract amount, whichever is greater." I do not believe that the proposed amendments to WCC 3.08 are clearly conveyed to the public, so I think this proposal should at the very least be rewritten, repackaged, and placed in a future council agenda, so it will then be brought forward much more clearly to the public, unless you're ready to vote no tonight. It is vital that there be the highest degree of checks and balances between the executive branch and legislative branch in our county government, not less which this ordinance would bring.
Thirty seconds, please.
In the memo, Mr. Lowe said, "We have increased transparency through contracts online and through enhanced project reports." Mr. Lowe may think that he has more, they have more increased transparency, but I disagree. Executive Lowe showed us last year when he decided to use over 44,000 of county funds for the controversial jail mailer sent to some, not all, registered voters in Watkins County in October 2015 during the November general election, and that matter is still being investigated after multiple complaints.
Time.
To the Public Disclosure Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope that you'll reject the proposal.
Thank you, council members, for your valuable efforts in reviewing and contributing to our comprehensive plan, in addition to all your other work for our community. I would like to acknowledge that I'm on land that is the traditional territory of the Lumia Nuxak peoples. It is my hope that we will continue to nurture our relationship with our co-sailage neighbors and the shared responsibilities to their homelands where we all reside today. I wanted to say tonight that I strongly support the edits by Councilmember Weimer on the Chapter 2 Land Use Section of the Comprehensive Plan regarding Cherry Point. I would say that if the edited section is retained that supports the consideration of renewable energy industry in that location, I also recommend that any provisions possible, whether within the comp plan or the critical areas ordinance, should be added that would strengthen and assure Lumia Nation's capacity to participate and have approval power on those industries. I wish to convey my deep gratitude to Councilmember Weimer for his significant contribution to Chapter 2. I urge all council members to support his edits and contribute to further strengthening the protection of the ecological, cultural, and historic value of Cherry Point. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Bruce Dyly, and I'm here speaking on the county having petitions, they're going around in the county having petitions on the gun issue, which is very contentious. And I just had an incident at the Trader Joe's where I was trying to oppose those gathering signatures for the petition, and I was told by the property management that I cannot oppose them with a sign, but they're allowed to meet in front of Trader Joe's and gather signatures for their petition. I believe that's really unfair. I think it's undemocratic, and there's no basis for it. They said that they have a legal right to be there, but I don't have a right to be there and hold up a sign and oppose them. The issue is on the gun control, which is very contentious, so I don't even think that should be taking place in front of a Trader Joe's, because it's so contentious. You know, why should they be able to have a contentious issue in front of Trader Joe's? It's inappropriate to begin with. But the point is, is that they, their petition is, they're scapegoating, I believe, scapegoating the mentally ill for the gun violence in this country, and it's wrong. Their wording is that those exhibiting mental illness and threatening behavior cannot buy a gun, and people were swarming to sign the petition. Oh, yeah. Everybody's like, "Oh, yeah, keep the hands out of the mentally ill. Keep the guns out of the hands of the mentally ill." It's like, "Oh, yeah, we need to do that? Why are we being made to look like public enemy number one?" We, I'm saying we, the mentally ill, because I'm mentally ill myself, but I'm not a danger to anybody. I've been here for eight years. People know me. I'm not a threat to anyone, especially not with a gun. But anyhow, to keep this brief, the, just to keep in mind, Timothy McVeigh, the man that reported to go up to Oklahoma City bombing the federal building, he and Hitler did not exhibit mentally ill behavior. So they could buy a gun under this petition, under this resolution, this Washington State resolution, they could buy a gun. But somebody like me, I cannot buy a gun to protect myself if I have to live in a tent homeless when they reintroduce the Grizzlies next year into the Cascades. So why? I have no criminal record. I've been cleaning silver for 31 years, and yet, gangbangers, Ku Klux Klan, neo-Nazis, et cetera, they can buy guns, but not me, because I exhibit mental illness when I'm in public at times, because I speak to myself in public.
Thirty seconds, please.
Okay. It's really hard to get this in in 30 seconds, so I'm doing the best I can. I wish I had more time, or 30, yeah, three minutes. My last point, very quickly, is that Richard Gere in the play Bent, there's not time for this, but anyhow, yeah, he showed, I really wish I had more time. It makes me really angry I don't have more time right now, because I want to explain Richard Gere in Bent, about the pink triangles and the homosexuals in the Nazi concentration camps, when the Nazis pointed guns at their head and made them have sex with a woman who had been shot in the head, and when they couldn't do it to prove their heterosexuality, they were shot in the head, and Richard Gere had to watch that process, you know, the play that, in the play.
I'm Joy Gilfill, and a taxpayer of Watkins County. Thank you again for the privilege to speak today. What I have to say is entirely my own opinion, and it's based on my own research. I have three things to address, and I am handing out three binders plus one for the record, having to do with the Addendum 123 to the noble cause corruption complaint that I filed with the PDC on November 30th of 2015. Before I start on that conversation, I want to address a couple of places where I have witnessed poor judgment recently with our sheriff's department specifically charging back the county $150,000 in taxpayers' money for basically funding and authorizing $150,000 expenditure to host the Donald Trump rally in Linden. To me, that basically was a private political party, and taxpayers should not be paying for it. That $150,000 could be far better spent correcting and repairing the jail, so that we have a humane, legal, and safe jail. I ask the county to deny the amendment to the purchasing system 3.08. I think Sandy Robson gave a very good testimonial about that. I support all that she said, and I do believe that by giving additional corporate contract authority to the county executive, you are actually undermining your own authority as a council, and I find it very difficult to believe that if he were to inappropriately spend $250,000 on a contract, that the council would have the wherewithal to be able to call him under investigation or question, since he, together with prosecutor and the sheriff, are the three top law enforcement officials of our county. We've had a problem with the jail tax. I filed the noble cause corruption complaint on purpose with the state auditor's office and with the other investigators, as well as the Public Disclosure Commission, because I believe that our county executive, our sheriff, and our prosecutor have been working in tandem with jail industry insiders. The evidence is in those binders that I just submitted to you. It's 196 pages that I've compiled out of well over 3,000 documents, public records documents, that show the historical pattern of executive branch collusion, in my opinion, with jail industry insiders to expand the jail industry in Watkins County to the detriment of the taxpayers. I've submitted a letter to you speaking to this, and I would also ask.
Thirty seconds, please.
But on this new task force that you guys are planning to appoint, you've already appointed the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force. Those people are doing really good work. They will reduce the jail population. They are exceptional. They are conscious citizens. They are doing their best to do good work for the citizens of Watkins County. I think it is undermining to assign another task force to figure out how to fund a jail that has not been approved, does not have a valid needs assessment.
Time.
And is in violation of the taxpayers' will. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Irene Morgan. I'm founder of the Restorative Community Coalition. This is perhaps my final testimony on this jail matter. I appreciate this opportunity to state my opinion. I have done my job. We've researched, we've spoken many times and shared with you and the community. Our research shows that there's been a deliberate overcrowding of the jail for the appearance of the need for a new jail complex. It's now up to you, and those of people who are here in the audience, and you out there in TV land, to take these facts that have just been presented to you, the true facts, uncovered from public records, public disclosure, and proceed with right action, right action for all, not just a few who seek control, power, or status. It's time now, and it's safe and necessary, for all of you who have information, who have watched some of these procedures, not knowing what to do, to now come forward and come out of the shadows and share your information. This proposed jail complex is not for public safety. It is not in the best interest of us, the citizens. It is for the expanding of the status quo and the jail industrial complex. Why are there, why, when there are thousands of empty jail beds in our state, do we, Watkins County, need a bigger, oversized jail to feed the system? If you really want to know what's going on, and I'm talking to the public now, there's a new article just came out today or very recently. It's called "The Real Cost," and it's all about the jail industrial complex. It's very telling, and it's on our, it'll be on our website tomorrow. I will remain on the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force and watch as we take more and more folks out of our jail by prevention, pre-trial, and intervention methods, reducing the numbers even more. Several times a week, we get more information, just like we did today, on what else, what else is out there that might be coming down the pike that we could implement and reduce our jail population even more. The Restorative Community Coalition is moving forward with our goals, and I am expanding and teaching my, expanding my teaching and my therapeutic work, moving on to my next life's work. I leave you with the idea to move forward with right action for all.
Thirty seconds, please.
I wish you all the best in all you do. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Hannah Sloan. I just found out about this meeting a couple of hours ago, and so I don't have anything super prepared, but do want to speak up regarding the jail issue. Really, I don't think this should be an issue anymore. I'm surprised that this council is entertaining, even listening to ideas about funding this new jail. It's a lavish, very lavish plan that won't have much payback. I heard from Joy speaking that it was about 100, almost $150 million. I just, that's, it's unconscionable, I think, if there is anything you can do about it, which I believe there is, for you just to stand by and watch this unfold. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of our tax dollars, and I think it's a waste, really, for us to just even come to meetings and have to ask you not to authorize this lavish complex. It really is. The jail industrial complex is a real problem. It's not just a buzzword made up by Irene Joy. President Eisenhower warned against it in his last State of the Union address that he gave. He called it the military industrial complex. It's the same, it's the same force that just keeps building. There's nothing in our society right now, no mechanism to deter this growing industrial complex. Except for people that we elect, you know. There's really, there's a financial motivation to keep it growing, and it's, at this point, it's irresponsible. I'm a criminal defense lawyer. I've been practicing for 25 years, and I've seen the trend go. I started practicing at the height of the war on drugs, and Irene's right. Our country is littered with empty prisons and jails. We don't need more. We just don't. I don't know how you could be bamboozled, or any county can be bamboozled into. I don't know how you could be bamboozled, or any county can be bamboozled into just building some big jail to lock people up.
Thirty seconds, please.
It's irresponsible, and I would really ask that you'd take your oaths into consideration. You did swear to uphold the law, and the conditions now have nothing to do with the new jail, and the way the conditions are now, it's illegal. So, doing something now about the jail problem that's now-
Time.
...is, I think, a separate issue, and that all of you should really take seriously that, that, take immediate action. It's really inhumane up there. So, I would be happy to talk to you on another day, when I'm more prepared, but it is serious, and I hope that you would take this seriously and not allow it to grow bigger on your watch. Thank you.
Max Perry, Watkins County. I sent you folks a memo on Land Use Chapter Two, and particularly the Cherry Point Heavy Industries Zone, and you've got some language in there that I think will eventually strangle the industries that are out there, because you've limited the ability for them to expand or to modernize, keep modernizing, keep efficient, keep, they're, all of them are getting older, so they have to either modernize or they lose position. And the report had some good information for you today on the amount of employment that is incorporated at the three heavy industries out there, two refineries in Intalko. And they go much beyond just that zone, so if you start choking down that, then you're also choking down a lot of other businesses that help support those businesses. So I just ask you to rethink that language that you have in there that's restricting the peers, that it's real common things on it now, but I worked in Intalko for thirty years. I worked very well with a lot of the Lummies that worked there, and worked in the refinery, or in the aluminum smolder, and the Kenleys, the Morris's, and there's others that I didn't know that are working there too, and are probably still working there. And I just say it's a good thing. You were talking about encouraging industries, businesses, to come into Watkins County. You've got them here. There are great wage, family wage-earning jobs out there, and I just encourage you to lay off of the restrictions on that Chapter Two. Thank you.
Thank you.
There were two matters I wanted to address, both, well, no, that's not true. My first concern is I oppose the proposed change in the amount of money that the executive is allowed to spend without council approval. Two hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money, and I feel much more comfortable having seven people up here that are elected by a wide range of people with different values, discussing major purchases like that, than having one person do it. I'm not, in any way, it's no, I'm not, it has nothing to do with who happens to be the executive. I just think it's better governance to have a large amount of money like that handled by the council. So, that concerns me. But there's more concerns I have in there regarding how this is drafted. So even if this goes forward, I'd ask that you send it back to be corrected, because it's kind of confusing to me. When you talk about this, there's talk about contracts that require, under 3.08.090, contracts that require county council approval, that exceed $250,000 or 15% of the contract amount, whichever is greater. That kind of doesn't make sense, because if it's 15% of a contract amount, whichever is greater, and the executive enters into a $10 million contract, that basically, there's no cap on what the executive can spend, which is not how this is being written and drafted. So maybe that word was supposed to be less? Otherwise, this is not being honest, and it's misrepresented. If you told people, the public, that the executive wants unlimited spending power, I think a lot more people would be out here. The other problem you have is, even assuming that that's what you want, when you come down to 3.08.100, and you repeat the same conditions, you're only talking about exceeding $250,000, and somehow, the 15% gets left out. Those two things have to kind of mirror each other. So I'm asking you to take a look at 3.08.100, and to see what exactly the scope of the spending power is, and compare that to 3.08.090-
Thirty seconds, please.
...because there's a conflict. The other thing, very briefly, I'd like to address is the jail agreement, the jail service agreements with the cities. My concern is that under Watkins County Code 1.28.100D, I believe, there's, there are performance standards for overcrowding that must be met, that determine when there's overcrowding, and when it occurs, the sheriff has to work with the courts if there's going to be any transfers. And that's being ignored in these interlocal agreements. I don't know how that's legal. I had written to the executive, and he never got back to me on that. So legally, I'm concerned about the conflict between that law and the interlocals. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wanda Nevels. Again, I didn't really have any time to prepare whatsoever for this, but I wanted to at least voice my, just, I'm completely against building this huge new jail and spending millions of dollars on it. I agree 100% that jails and prisons, many of them in general, can be improved and need to be improved. But, you know, I have a close friend who spent most of his life in and out of jail. He was severely depressed and addicted to drugs and alcohol, and all the times that he went through the courts and in and out of jail, there was never any help. There was never any diversion. There was never any treatment. There was not drug court or anything like that for him. And he's in prison now, and he'll be there for three years. And I just think, especially when you're dealing with that amount of money, it's completely offensive to even think about spending it on building a new jail and not on diversion, especially when there are numerous programs around the country that are proving that diversion, you know, for addiction treatment, for mental health treatment, for housing assistance, that when people are given help, instead of being incarcerated, recidivism rates are a lot lower, and not only is it more humane, but it's been proven time and time again that it's less expensive. So I think just regardless of all the details of other reasons why this wouldn't work, I would just want to point out that, you know, there's a difference between legality and morality.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the open session? Seeing none, we'll close the open session. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We've heard tonight from a couple of people for whom the jail issue appears to be something relatively new, and I'd just like to encourage them, or anybody else who's watching this, if they want additional information, I would go to the county website and Google two things. One is new jail information, and the second is the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. Both those links will provide extensive information on the topic.
Okay. And with that, we will move into the consent agenda from Finance.
Mr. Chair, Watkins County Financial Administrative Services Committee met today, and we considered items one through eight. Each of these received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending Watkins County Code 3.08 purchasing system. This item was considered by Finance, and we decided to hold it in committee until the next meeting.
Ms. Brenner?
What if the majority doesn't want to hold it in committee, wants to vote on it? I can make that motion?
Well, you can, because it's-
That issue is actually before the council as a whole, so if you wanted to make that motion, you could.
No, it was in the committee. It was in-
Correct, but the ordinance itself is before the body, so-
Right.
-if you want to make that motion, you can.
Okay. I move that we vote on it now.
Is there a second? No second. So we are held in committee on that item.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next item was an ordinance amending the 2016 Watkins County Budget, tenth request, in the amount of $1,207,900. This received unanimous approval from the committee, and I so move.
Okay, this is an ordinance, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Let's do that again. Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sop Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was to request approval for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and Watkins County for the 2016 Edward Barron Memorial Justice-
That was withdrawn.
Assistance Grant Program Award, and this item was redrawn by staff. And there was no further business from Finance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Public Works Health and Safety.
We had an item resolution to consider the vacation of an unnamed alley within the Whispering Pines Platte, and to vote for this would put it into the planning department to look, get an engineering study and decide, is it Public Works or Planning? Planning. Public Works. Okay, put it into Public Works to get an engineering study, and then bring back the results of that. And the reason I'm bringing, not only bringing that up, is that my concern, my one big concern would be to make sure that there's the ability for the county, if we need to do some kind of stormwater facilities, that we would have access to that property. And it's not clear to me that we would, but it will be clear by doing an engineering study. So, that's the step we're taking. This is no final decision. It'll come back to us for a final decision. And I move approval.
Okay, that comes from committee, so it does not need a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. That's the end of Finance, or that's the end of Public Works. Next one is no committee assignment, it's appointment of two council members to serve as members of the jail stakeholder work group. And I guess, to start it out, I'd just entertain nominations.
I nominate everybody except me.
Everybody except you.
I nominate Mr. Mann.
No, actually, I'm being serious. I'm already spending a huge amount of time on the jail, and I think this, the more separate this group is from the Incarceration Task Force, the better. I just, I also think it's good to have more eyeballs on, from the county council on this than just one person kind of doing it all. So, not that I'm doing it all, but I mean, that I don't want to be our eyes and ears.
I think we get it.
Okay. Yeah.
So let me, let me ask you a question. Would you, would you entertain a process that those who are interested, raise their hand, and only include those in the nomination?
That'd be great.
Chair, can I say something really quick?
Yes.
Yeah, we heard a lot of public comment about the jail today, and I think perceptions of this group, and some presumption that it had something to do with funding a huge jail that was going to be in Ferndale. And I just want to make sure people know that that's not the task of this group. This council heard the voters, the previous proposal was rejected, and all the things that everybody wants, whether it's triage, whether it's rebuilding the jail that we got, whether it's building a new jail, treatment services, all of that needs money. And we got to figure out how to get something that various jurisdictions, the county, the city, agree on in terms of funding mechanism, and that's what this committee is about. And I don't think we're going in there with any assumptions about size, beds, location, all that stuff. It's what can governments agree on that we can get the voters to agree on. And so in that sense, it's different than the task force is doing. So I just hope people recognize that.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I'd like to, I don't support having two council members on here, and we did get a, didn't we get a letter today from the small cities that they felt like, between the city of Bellingham and Watkins County, we pretty much got it all covered, and they, you know, they represent one, what is it?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five, no, no, not thirty-five thousand, which is about 30%, 40%, I don't know, of the population of the county. So they felt they should have, you know, another slot for them, and I'm sure willing to give up the second council slot to let there be a slot for the small cities.
Well, we've already approved that we're going to have two council members on this task force.
We can-
But let me continue.
Reconsider.
I worked with the sheriff a little bit this morning, talking back and forth about looking at jurisdictional usage and trying to put together percentages, and it's kind of still work in progress to see-
Okay.
-how that shakes out between the small cities and Bellingham, just to see what the ratio is, not just with population, but with actual use over time. So I'd just like to continue with our process now of selecting two council members. So which-
Can I, just, since you brought that up, I think use sometimes has a lot more to do with how many deputies are available and handling stuff than whether there's crime. I'd like, if you're going to continue your discussion with the sheriff about this, I'd like to know the crime rates, too, not just how many people get caught, because they're more likely to get caught in Bellingham and in certain parts of the county, but not necessarily in the small cities. So I just think it's, it's something that ought to be looked at before we fill up the slots.
Okay, well, we're not appointing those slots tonight. We're only appointing our council slot.
And if we had one council slot instead of two, we would-
So who's interested in being on the committee?
Guess they're Phil.
Looks like Mr. Donovan and I are nominated, so let's-
By acclamation, you guys.
By acclamation, yes.
So, I would then move that Mr. Donovan and myself, Councilmember Buchanan, be appointed to the jail stakeholder work group.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
But I don't support the two positions.
I understand.
Okay.
That passes-
But I like the idea of you guys being on.
That passes unanimously. Well, thank you.
I'll warm up, too.
Oh, yeah, I'd rather you be deciding these things than me.
Thank you for agreeing to do-
Yes.
...the other task.
Yes.
So, the next item on the agenda is a resolution accepting a petition to create the Columbia Valley Park and Recreation District, and setting a date for public hearing on the proposal.
I move approval.
And that's on your orange extra sheet that you should have got?
Yep.
Or addition to tonight's agenda? A lot of orange things in front of us.
I think you might be a little bit colorblind. I think you might be a little bit colorblind. Looks kind of like gold to me.
I'm just reading it and I think it says it's orange. That's pumpkin orange.
See, I would have called that orange.
Oh, no, that's salmon.
Oh.
With a comma.
With a comma.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Brown?
I would just like to compliment the Columbia Valley community for doing this.
Yes, absolutely.
So we're on to executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We have a request for confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Laura Hannah to the Watkins County Marine Resources Committee. I would entertain a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We also have a request for confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Gerald Veltkamp to Watkins County Appeals Board.
I'll move approval.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We also have a request for confirmation of county executive's appointment of Anna Martin to the Watkins County Agricultural Advisory Committee. Move approval. Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded. Discussion?
I'll have a pick your point. I just want to thank all these people for doing this.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the council definitely thanks everyone that's stepping up to these various committees. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have five items on our introduction slate for this evening. Entertain a motion to introduce.
I'll move to introduce.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Other committee reports. Did you have anything else from Public Works today? I don't think so.
Well, just, I would like to follow up somehow. How are we going to know what happens with the city? This isn't from my committee, but it could have been if anybody put it there. So I'd like to know what we do about the follow-up on the small cities. Is that something we're going to find out about, having a representative on the, another representative on the?
Yeah, when I, when I get everything I need, and what I'll do is bring that information to the next council meeting.
Okay.
So we can talk about.
Good.
Any other committee-related reports? Nothing else from Finance, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry, I just have a check.
I think you're right.
You're right.
So other items of business. Do we have any down this way? Mr. Wymer?
Yeah, I would just like to encourage us to try to pin down when we're going to do extra meetings for the comp plan as soon as possible. I know some council members are going to start disappearing in parts of July, and it'd be really good if all seven of us could be here for those discussions instead of being a smaller field, so.
Yes.
Which I think means maybe meetings next week, but that, that may not be necessary.
I support this. I forgot it.
Next Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know everybody's availability. I think maybe Dana's checked already, but might need to be updated. Sorry, I'm sure.
Availability of what?
Meeting of people.
Of us?
I haven't checked on next week for availability.
Well, we're all here.
We're all here.
Here we are.
Everyone available, please raise your hand.
All right.
That passes unanimously. So we will.
The staff who aren't going to be here.
Yeah.
We're going to need a second on that kind of motion.
Can we use?
That's no motion. Yeah, I think so, all day.
Set aside the whole day.
9:30 to 4:30, everybody pull that.
We better have a break. We have, yeah, a big break in the middle.
What are you talking about, July 5th?
Yeah.
July 5th. Do we, what does, does that meet our notice period requirements?
Okay, then maybe we could figure out where we are that day and see if we need another one? Okay. So other items. Seeing none? Council member updates? Mr. Mann?
I've got a few. I want to commend the council for your wisdom in putting out a, authorizing the RFQ for a jail task force consultant and a facilitator. We got a number of responses from very, very qualified organizations, and I've, I just got them today, but just briefly looking through them, the incarceration prevention reduction task force is going to have some very skilled and qualified help going forward. So I want to thank you guys and just let you be the first to know that we have a lot of good things to choose from. Also, today is Phoebe's fourth birthday, so I'd like to say happy birthday to Phoebe. And Friday was my 16-year wedding anniversary. And my wonderful wife let me go while she took care of the kids, while I got to go have a meeting with President Obama and 3,000 other people. And it was, it was exciting to be in the room with the President of the United States. And yeah, happy anniversary, honey.
Will you feel that way no matter who gets elected this time?
You know, I am, I am a fan of our current president. It's probably no surprise, but I actually, having been there and getting to see him in person and listening to him talk, and I know most presidents would be interesting to see in person. So the answer to your question is yes. I, I wish I had gone to see George W. Bush, even though I wasn't a fan of his. Looking back, I think it would have been ver, a very healthy experience to be in the same room with him and see him in action. And I think I would feel the same way going forward if I ever get a chance to be in the room. I mean, candidly, it was a huge room, but I was pretty close, about 20 feet away. And it was, it was a thrill. So yeah, I would do it again.
Mr. Brown? Happy birthday, Phoebe.
Thank you. I'll pass it along.
And I too would, would be equally as interested. I was also at the event that Mr. Mann was at, and I would be equally interested in seeing the next president, no matter who she may be.
And surprise, I was also at the event.
Yeah.
So the council was almost a quorum at the Seattle.
Are you a quorum of any committee?
But we were very well spread out. We were all at different tables, and it was a big room, so. But it was incredible. It was, it was a lifetime experience, and it was fun to see how many people from Watkins County were there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot of people, so. Ms. Brenner?
I wasn't there. That's all.
This is, I, I wasn't there either. I was at the Sacramento event, talking about democracy, and just missed a skinhead riot. I never read about that.
Oh, yeah.
But flying back, the president's plane was at SeaTac Friday night and Saturday morning. So I came close.
I got to see his flag.
But I've actually seen Donald Trump three times, so like, that's just as good.
Whatever.
Is he ragging or complaining?
I was making a joke and I forgot to do my.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I attended the Washington, Northwest Washington Fair Foundation Dinner, and I recommend it to anybody who's never been to one. It's really a relaxing time, and we get to hear all this great stuff about what's happening with the fair. Right now, they're working on a project to, to rebuild the clock tower. It was destroyed in one of the windstorms in March. And if you, I almost brought it with me. If you, if you, you know, donate at least, what was it, at least $50, you get this really neat beating heart. And it's a wonderful project. I mean, that's been kind of like what everybody looks at when they go to the fair. It's a really important monument of the fair. And they have lots of meetings around it and everything. So I encourage anybody to donate whatever you can to, to rebuild that clock tower.
Mr. Sedu?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Yeah.
Well, with no other business before the council, we stand adjourned.
Oh, it's so cool. I'm sorry.